Good evening, the blessings of our life for watching over us another day, Lord, another week. Bless each and every one that's here to see you, Lord. Give us the knowledge and understanding to make the best decisions for our county. Heavenly Father, walk with us throughout the week. Bless our family and our children. Heavenly Father, bless our first responders and our soldiers this evening, Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, I'm going to make it. I acknowledge that we need to pray for peace this evening, Heavenly Father, for everybody to have peace in their lives. To Jesus, thank you for all that you do, but most of all, for the plan of salvation. Amen.
Let's remain standing for a flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Charles Bear.
Here.
Dewayne Bear. Johnny Bruce.
Here.
Ralph Davis.
Here.
Michael Douglas.
Here.
Whit Goins. Robert Higginbotham.
Here.
Tyler King.
Here.
Scotty Kitt.
Here.
Tucker Colmar.
Here.
Lisa Lester.
Here.
Zach Marlowe.
Here.
Sue Nance.
Here.
Rusty Ork.
Here.
Scott Stanfield.
Here.
Our team present.
I'd like to state that we do have a quorum. As for the past few months, guys, I'm going to set the workshop time limit for an hour and a half, which is from 6:00 to 7:30. Extension of the workshop by 30 minutes requires a motion to be voted on by the majority of the county commissioners present. It has to be a simple majority. As with the last few months' meetings, public comments will be moved to the end of the meeting to ensure that citizens have an opportunity to address any item placed on the agenda at the workshop. First off, speaking with the media. Daniel Boomer. I've had several comments from people out in the community that are just tickled to death that they're being able to get the live feed and also being able to see it. So that tells me that people are starting to tune in now, which is good. Also, Eva, I've had several that have watched the live feed and they're actually buying the LaFollette press to look at your stories and stuff that you're putting in there. So, hey, I think that's good, that the public's getting interested in what's going on here. I just wanted to say those things and thank you all for being here.
Oh, your name's Eva, I'm sorry.
Eva, hey, you said the way you want to, I'll say it well. All right. Mayor, just a couple of questions I need you to clear up on, okay? A couple of things. I'm sure that all of you have had questions and comments about the fishing tournament. Can you give us an explanation of some of what happened on the, I guess, debacle on the fishing tournament?
We've had it funded through the JCB ever since we started. The JCB decided not to fund it. I made the motion, but it couldn't get a vote through.
Okay.
That's been our funding source. It is community and economic development. It's built for that board's mission. I'll take it back again and ask you again.
Okay. Well, I think that the county commissioners kind of got some blame for that, too. And I want to stay right here that we had absolutely nothing to do with it. I think some comments.
There's still a chance to fund the next term.
You know, like I said, with the funding body and stuff, I understand that.
JCB has $130,000 a year to work with. That's where we paid for it.
Okay. All right. The next question, this was kind of funny, but I figured, hey, I'd let you answer it for us. There was a comment that was made on the local media outlet that you had put together nine budgets without the help of the county commission. And I want to say that, hey, I've been at every budget and finance meeting, you know, and I don't think we can pass a budget without the county commission. Do you not agree with that? I mean.
No, I agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, but, you know, like I said, the question was, you know, put out there that you'd done it by yourself without any help. And I just wanted to.
Who did that question?
In one of the media, I'll let you know.
And we've been part of nine budgets?
Yes.
And that's true.
And I think that, hey, that this body has worked diligently on those budgets and stuff to pass them and push them through.
Well, in the 1981 Act, the mayor can't do it by himself. He can't do it in any act, so that would be discriminatory.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you clearing that up for us. Instead of that way, hey, because the comment was just a false statement, I would say then.
Didn't make that statement.
No, it wasn't you, you know. But, hey, I wanted you to clear it up to let people know that, hey, it takes all of us. Guys, moving on down to the commissioners. I just want to recognize all the commissioners that are seeking reelection. Guys, I think it's a community service job. It's a thoughtless job sometimes, you know. And I just appreciate the fact that you're willing to serve your community in Campbell County. And in saying that, I want to recognize the commissioners that are seeking reelection. In the first district, Mr. Zach Marlowe. In the second district, Ms. Lisa Lester and Mr. Scotty Kitts. In the third district, Mr. Dewayne Bear, Mr. Rusty Ork, and Mr. Scott Stanfield. In the fourth district, Mr. Goat Bear, Ms. Sue Nance, and myself. In the fifth district, Mr. Ralph Davis, Mr. Mike Douglas, and Mr. Tyler King. And I just want to say for their willingness to continue serving the residents of their district and of Campbell County and continuing the good work that they have started for the citizens of Campbell County. And I wish you all the best and so forth. Now, I also want to thank Mr. Whit Goins, Mr. Butch Colmar, who have chosen not to seek reelection for county commission. And Butch, I want to thank you for all your hard work and everything and your contributing to the second district and to the citizens of Campbell County.
I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
And like I said, same thing with Whit, you know. I was tickled, Scotty, when you said that he was doing a lot better. That just, hey, that.
Well, when he snuck down to Kansas, that explained a lot.
That did, it really did. It certainly did. Also, I want to thank Mr. Robert Higginbotham. Robert has served the first district for eight years as a county commissioner. I want to thank you for your service and everything that you've done there. But Robert will not be seeking the office of county commissioner. Robert has chosen to seek the office of county mayor. Now, before we start building the agenda, does anyone have anything to say?
I'd like to ask the question.
Go ahead, Scotty.
Mayor, I promise you, I'm not trying to be mean or be disruptive about the question I'm about to ask you. But the question I want to ask you is simple. This fishing tournament thing, I'm going to tell you now, it's a huge, huge, huge success for Campbell County. I went down at Wiggles out there, you know, when this thing was going. I'd never seen so many votes and everything. I would just like to know, the question is, I hope and pray that we don't lose this revenue from them. Is it a fair statement to ask you this question? Have we lost the people in Moorestown? Have we lost this? Have we lost them?
None of us got the question.
But did they get, okay, what I'm saying is, did they get paid the $10,000 that they supposed to have got paid?
They've gotten paid every year.
Did they get paid this year here?
JCB did not approve the vote.
Okay, can I ask you this question? Whose responsibility is it for them to get paid? Why is it they did not get paid? Because right now, these people here, we're talking about a lot of revenue, not just a little bit, a lot of revenue. Because when you give this organization $10,000, and I was being approached by several people, not just in my district, all over the county, Phil's district, everywhere. Whose responsibility is it to make sure that these people get paid and satisfy them for this thing to continue to go on? And I think this is the first year, Rusty, you guys may tell me, how many years in a row has this thing been going on?
It's been about eight.
So is this the first year that this has happened?
Yes.
And what is the main reason for that?
The JCB has been the funding source.
Okay, did they have the money to pay them?
They've got $400,000.
What was the reason, exact reason? Do you know? Who's responsible for that?
I won't bring the motion again this year.
Who's responsible for them to get paid?
The JCB is funded through the tax base. If you have a fishing tournament, the chamber contracts for it. But without the funding, the chamber didn't have the funding to pay them.
Well, yeah, I'm telling you right now, I'm being as compassionate as I can. I'm not trying to be hard. These people are mad. And this is going to cause a lot of revenue. It's caused a lot of stink around here because they did not get paid.
I think they should get paid.
Yeah, I agree with you. But my understanding here is, if they were to be asked again and they may get paid, they're not going to come back. I don't blame them.
If you have the money, you go pay them.
But you need to pay them, we need to pay.
I can't pay them.
No, I'm saying whoever, your organization, they need to get paid, these people do. They're not paid. They're not paid.
I think we've got a JCB scheduled for LaFollette Utilities Board Room, all public, open in the comments.
Okay, thank you.
How much support?
Rusty?
And I don't want to act. I'm a mayor, and I'm nine out of ten to meet. And I'm not pushing favors anyway. But I will say this, I talked to Andy Cole, which is the one that runs Moorestown Marina. And he wasn't happy. I talked to him that Friday, and it wasn't aware that he hadn't been there. The question he asked me, where he told me, the students owe me $10,000. Well, the commissioners that were sitting here when this started, it was started by the commission. And if you just want to know who it was started, I can tell you that. It was a guy named David Atkins and Stan Marlowe. And Spirit had it. And this commission gave the money to the chamber the first year in a college season. And things changed, but the chamber always went to the joint economic development. And they've asked for the money. But I will say this, talking to Andy, and I've talked to him numerous times. We may lose this. I'm just, I'll be honest with you, we might lose this tournament. Harrison County, as you may be aware, I've been aware for years, but they've been wanting our hand in this for the last four years. And they usually aggravate me when I run into them that they're going to get this tournament. And I think we need to act fast to try to keep them here. One of the two things, since I've been sitting on the commission, that I really enjoy and the public's enjoyed is the fishing tournaments and ATB fest because we gave back. But I assure you, if something ain't done, and he will not do it again without a contract. So whichever entity that has chosen to do that will have to do a contract. And I don't blame them. But hopefully, we can keep that portal open for a few more weeks. If we can, maybe we can keep them here. If not, Harrison County's going to grab it. Not a doubt in my mind. Anybody in their right mind wouldn't, by no means, let this fall through. And I'm not going to. It just may here for me, in the next couple of weeks, if we can't come up with the funding, it brings in, the mayor probably knows exact figures.
That's a quarter million dollars.
But not only that, not bringing in just the funds, it brings people to Campbell County. They see TWRA, Jay McCallum, some of his men know him. That's the one that we've worked with to get the Blacktop and done. And he's telling me the other day that it sounds like that we're going to get in that Build Dash tournament money. And I hope we do. But he was astonished when me and Johnny met with him and we showed him how many votes for our trust. But please, commissioners, just don't let this fall aside. I think LaFollette's kind of quit doing the ATB festivals because of COVID. And it's a different trope for different folks. But I will assure you, and you can well into call Moorestown Marina and talk to Andy Cole, he's the owner. He'll tell you the same thing, he's a straight shooter, Scott.
Okay. All right. Anyone else wish to make a comment before we move on? Ms. Nance?
Mayor, did they give a reason for not paying?
No, they said if the chamber will raise their money, then they match it. Well, the chamber committed the whole big rush this year.
Can I ask one more question?
Nope. We've had your three minutes, you've had yours. Ms. Sue?
I'm ready, thank you.
Okay. All right. Anybody else?
When is the next meeting? When is the next meeting for the?
Ms. Lisa, what's the next? Joining number?
It's not on the calendar.
I'll have a man get that out to you. Okay? Thank you. All right, moving on. Approval of the previous, let's build our agenda, okay? Approval of.
Did the mayor want Lady Berlin?
Well, I talked to chairman about that. I was going to go to the carable council and talk to them about the shelter, but he recommended just try to get a one-on-one with the mayor.
I'm not trying to, you forgot.
I know. I think, to me personally, I think it's a better idea to talk to them one-on-one instead of, you know, let them take it back to their board.
I just heard him ask, and I didn't want to do this out. The mayor didn't say.
Moving on down, approval of previous minutes. Notary public applications approval. Committee reports in minutes, that's budget and finance, FMS, infrastructure, building and grounds, and the animal control. Approval of budget amendments and other funding resolutions, we took care of those. Approval for payment of the monthly travel credit card. Everything is taken care of there. Mayor, you have an outstanding of 50697. Reports from county officials in all departments, including Board of Education. Reports from organizations receiving funding from the county, we have no reports. For information purposes only, surface mining application, NPDES permit. Last day to comment was 4/25 or 22. On the other matters, the Board of Education has asked, you know, I think they're working a lease agreement with the Highlands for the wind school to put, is it a tower there?
It's a work group.
Okay.
Can I add something, Johnny, before you move on?
You have something to add?
Yes, and some of us may have knocked off this. They're actually sent out, and they had to do it by, I think, by federal law. There's a cell phone tower, and I don't know if it's received it or not, from Amanda, that's going in the second district. It's open for comment, too. And I think they have to do that, don't they, Joe? Because of historical property that could be in Scotty, your district, and leases. But I've been approached last year about it. Because the people that live around it got worried about it, and they don't want it. But I don't.
Is this a long hauler?
No long hauler of it.
Okay. I've tried to check on that, and I couldn't figure out who.
I called them and talked to them last week.
Go ahead.
The way I was told is, if it's personal property, there's nothing they can do. But if there's somebody, they can call from the state.
We don't have someone.
Right.
And that's the thing, it actually was sent to the planning commission. And it's because of historical Indian property that it could be. And they covered her bases. They've got a company out of Georgia, I believe, that's researching it. But they also opened it up for commenting. Now, I gave them my comment, but it's just mine. And that's what students need to do, too. I mean, if you're ordered against it, you know, I think they're going to places in front of somebody's house, but that's me.
Right.
But I wanted everybody to be aware of that. And if you don't have that information, Amanda, get her to send it to you.
Scotty, give that information.
I'm going to call it to you before.
I'd like to get the information. Can I ask Joe a question?
Go ahead.
Because my name was mentioned, sir. You dealing with personal property? I don't think that we can do anything at all with that. Is that right, Joe?
But you don't have someone.
That's why I'm saying, there's nothing we can do with that.
That would be a lease that I would assume that a private individual has made with some company to allow a town to be put on their property for some rent. The commission doesn't have anything to do with that. You can certainly express your opinion. You can call and comment on it just like anybody else can. But you don't have any other side of it. Now, you know, if there's some historical significance to it, you know, those are things that they have to go through administratively in order to get the permit to be able to build a tower. If there's Indian possibility there, you know, they have to have archaeological state and agency, if there's anything there that would be affected by it. But that's not something that this commission has any capability.
Are you talking about the Indians?
That answer your question?
Well, I'll get the information from Amanda.
Okay, good enough. Lisa, I'll give you.
No, I'm good, because I'll get with Rusty, because I've tried to check on him, and they said it's out of our control.
Now, I follow that.
That's okay. No, I'm glad you did.
And I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware.
That's fine. We, Scotty and Lisa, need to know that.
Yeah.
That helps him.
I appreciate that, too, Rusty.
Okay, moving on down. Board of Equalization appointments. Mayor, is there just one that'll be on there?
Yes. Keith Clark Pelter could not serve. A Glenn Smith, Mountain Road, carable, said he would serve. Just zoom there. Carry that.
Okay. Rusty?
This is the even year we get to pick on this year, right, commission?
We always have to approve them.
If we don't do it by May the 30th, I think, am I right, Zach? That it falls into the mayor's lap to do it. But we could actually replace every member on that board if he chose to. He chose to. I don't know if we need to.
I just know you got a vacancy.
Okay. Thank you. Educational support for county employees require a contract, no cost to the county. Charles, I think that's yours, isn't it? Okay. Who's going to be carrying that? It has to... Do we just have to approve the letters, all we have to approve?
The vice position.
No, the educational support for county employees.
It just has to be approved.
Charles, would you care to explain that, please?
The state of Tennessee Department of Health is offering opportunity to provide educational reimbursement for county employees. It's a program exactly like the state of Tennessee offers to Department of Health employees. And it's basically educational leave and tuition assistance from associate, bachelor, master, doctoral degree. Basically, what it ended up doing is the county would enter into a contract with the state of Tennessee. The county would have to pay tuition to the institution upfront, and then the state would reimburse the county for those funds. An employee cannot be on probation to be eligible for this. They have to be in the public health field, in other words, they have to benefit the health department. They must have maintained at least a value overall in performance evaluation. And then they must maintain at least a B average in those courses. In order to do this, basically, they would have to sign a commitment that after their last paid tuition, they would have to commit to 12 months working for the county. Or there could be the potential that they would have to repay those funds to the county. Trying to think. The process also calls for a policy to be developed, which the state said that we could limit their policy, which I have a copy of, and I'd like to have a copy of that. I also have a, I don't know how much of this information that you receive, but here's kind of an overview. Would you like me to pass this out to the commissioners?
That'd be great.
Here's a copy of the actual policy from the state. And I'm just going to play it right here. I brought 15 copies, I hope that's enough.
That'd be good.
Basically, to get county employees to help the department benefit that the state has in order to help them further their education. And like I said, again, it would be the county entered into a contract. And I think funding, general funding ending in June 2023 possibly be extended. It's not guaranteed at this point. Basically, the county would enter into a contract with the state. The county would put this tuition funding up front, and then the state would reimburse the county. So we would have to develop a policy, and we'd also have to put in a committee selection to review any applications.
That would be through the health department, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Rusty, who else wants to ask? Okay, hold on. Anyone else who wants to ask, Charles? Okay, we have three people asking questions. Rusty, then Zach, then Ralph.
Almost the same plan the state offers, it's just mirrored off of the county. And the county has to reimburse that.
Correct. I mean, I know what the state policy is on the purpose of education. So we've got to come up with a formula for the finance, the budget, to actually... Do you know how many, by any chance, Charles? I guess you'd have to take all the county employees and say it's potential all of them to do it in health.
Right. And who, I honestly don't know who would be interested.
But to do the numbers, we would have to have either Zach or Peter Moll in. But it's a reimbursement, how long would reimbursement buy?
I would, basically, I guess, whatever the county pays as soon as the invoice is sent in, whatever time it takes to save it.
And then the state will monitor if they keep the B average and all that education.
It would be actually probably the health department, the committee.
The county wouldn't have to go back and hold their funds up, because you said they had to work for them for 12 months after the price.
They have to sign a contract, and they have to continue to work at that health department for 12 months after their last.
What would the contract would be with Campbell County or with?
We would be with the employee, the employees receiving the tuition assistance.
But would it be with the county, because our county employees, or would the contract be with the state of Tennessee?
It would be between the county and the employees.
So the county would have to hold them, correct? Okay, I'm done.
Okay. Zach, you have the floor.
Okay. I think where, because we had this last month where I got confused and Joe may be able to answer this question. Do we need to create a separate policy? Or does this need to be, even though it's just for Department of Health employees, or does this have to be added into the personnel policy? It really wasn't clear to me how that needed to be done.
Charles, can you answer that?
Well, I can answer from our perspective. I can answer from the county perspective. In order to do this, we would have to develop a policy. And with that information, I passed out what the state policy is. And in the discussion of this, the state said the county can mirror the state policy on this tuition assistance. And you can read through there, just the purpose, the policy, approval criteria, procedures to apply, and then the actual application process. And number 13 on page four of the application process, it says one year commitment, by signing the applicant's commitment to at least one year of continued service. It says state, and that would be replaced with county following the last paid or time-supported semester of the program.
Okay, just also a note, too, regardless of federal funding, don't employees on the state side, don't they already get so many free courses?
There is a tuition waiver. A state employee, it's either six months or a year, they can take one course per semester at a state college, university, or institution. They can, I guess, in the technical school. And the tuition is when the employee would be responsible for books or any other subsidiary costs, but the tuition is waived. That is just one class per semester.
I believe that answers my question.
Mayor, did you have a comment?
I think it would be an initial contract with the state, and then as applicants apply, they contract with the county.
Ralph, the other question? Yes, the county would enter into a contract with the state for the program as a fund to be reimbursed. And then the employee would enter into a contract with the county for the tuition assistance.
Got you. Got you. Ralph, you have the floor.
All right, it says, you know, it must be employed by the local health department. Then it says direct local, does that mean that, and anyone working for the school system is a nurse, that it's a solid?
That, that's a, that's kind of an internal term. Sometimes we call, what you call a direct, what would, what we would refer to the state as a direct local employee, would be an employee working at the health department that is paid strictly on account of funds. Cause we have employees at the health department that are county employees, but they are reimbursed for their employment costs by the state. The county is reimbursed by the state. But a direct local would be someone that, um, is paid directly by the county.
All right, next question is, say one of these employees gets halfway, two-thirds way through this class, and then they drop out. They just can't take you to quit, is the county gonna pay that, or is that something that we want to bear that burden, or is...
I think that would be something that maybe the attorney could answer in terms of holding, if the attorney would pay that fund.
Or, you know, the state's gonna reimburse us, so...
The state would reimburse you, and I guess it would be up to the county if you wanted to... I guess that's a good question, I'll find out new information. Ultimately, the county would have to, then, I guess, pursue that employee if they drop out.
Mayor, can you answer that for us?
You don't get to be, you don't get to be, it's the employee's responsibility, whether they quit.
You have to breach your contract, so you catch what I'm saying.
The employee's paid up front.
Yeah. Okay, Ralph, it's paid up front.
Their contract would require them to repay the county, in that way.
Okay, okay. Ralph, you have the floor.
Mr. Turner, does this have to be passed as a mandate? And if not, what's the best way?
Well, I think, I think what you're running up against, I'm not gonna say yes or no, what you're running up against is right now, uh, the federal funding will end June 30th, there's a potential it will be, so, the sooner we get it in place, the sooner we could probably benefit some employees. And again, I had to take a poll to see how many of the county employees would be interested in this. You know, this is kind of something that just came up, of course, it was presented, I think, last month. Um, you know, we're just trying to work through the process. So, to answer your question, I can't say yes or no, but I think it is, you know, an essence of time because of the timeframe of the funding. To get the health employees.
Robert, anything else?
Yeah, on, on another note, it's kind of in the same line, uh, we put a employee bonus thing for the EMS back, or last month, and then happened to go, there was a sign on the center. Had a couple employees that actually got hired, took the $2,500, saw it on the bogus, stayed a month or two and left. And nobody's been to the queue.
Well, I think, based on my knowledge, and the way that I read this, the, and I can't remember where I saw it. Basically, the county would pay, would have to pay the institution, and then submit an invoice to the state to be reimbursed. So the state, I'm thinking you're gonna get your reimbursement back.
No matter what.
Right.
Anything else?
And I, and I'll be happy to, to address that question, or give clarification on that, but the way that I read that is, and I, again, I can't remember exactly where I saw that, but, uh, it's probably in here somewhere, but I'm trying to find it, try to read for the holders, yeah.
A second. Mayor, while he's looking at you, you got a comment?
All right, Robert, if you got those two names, I'll look it up, but we didn't disperse the entire bonus and this thing. We did that over time, a little too good.
Underneath county government, it says pay the institution, excluding program, raise directly to the institution, invoice the state will be reimbursed. Submit a report regarding employees' participation in educational support system, that would be called the lead, that lead would be set up to elect a community that's leading the teams.
Anything else?
Uh, this, Mr. Turner, if you could, I'm trying to get a number, this is actually interesting, getting back with some employees.
Mr. Turner? I'm gonna let Scotty, do you have a comment?
Actually, you know, I need to ask a question, that's, it's beneficial, I have a commissioner here.
Okay, Scotty, you have the floor.
Charlie, appreciate you always coming before this commission and giving these updates like this for us. Uh, since to Tennessee Department of Health, uh, my question to you is, is, um, you, have you, uh, played ballgame around the other counties and seen what this is, are they also, can you elaborate on that, please? And I have another question after that.
Well, um, I think what you're asking, are there any other counties that are doing?
Right.
Okay. The only perspective that I can speak from is the two counties that I know of, and that's Anderson and Campbell. And Anderson County's commission passed it last month.
How's it working, do you know?
We haven't got anybody yet, we're still in the process of going through setting up policies and procedures, so...
And the other county?
Uh, that would be here.
So you're just doing, representing two counties?
That's correct.
So Anderson County jumped on board with you?
That's correct.
Okay, it says here, it sounds like a pretty good thing, the thing we need to do. Says, uh, uh, $25,000 a year, is that right?
Up to $25,000.
And, uh, and then it says it's a great plus, 90% of the tuition up to 20, and then, uh, it says, uh, 52.50 per year will subject better intent tax, they'll have to report that, is that right?
If it's over, um, if it's in excess of that 52.50, yes.
Sounds, sort of sounds like kind of win-win for the county.
I would agree with that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, Rusty, you said you had some, uh, comments at the commission, the questions you asked, ready to, please?
Yeah, um, I'm gonna speak.
Go ahead.
The tuition's gonna be paid up front, Charles?
That's my understanding.
Or after the course is done?
I'm assuming it's gonna have to be paid up front, cause you, anybody that's got a kid in college.
And I have no, I have no problem with it, honestly, I don't, I think that's, it's a good thing, uh, we have employees that's, actually can get their education, but it's like with Robert, the rest of them, we've got the, the financial ends. You know, we throw this on the finance department, I know what's gonna happen, they're gonna say, what, what do we do? They've got to have some numbers to run, because actually, we want to pull money out, we're gonna get it back. But it's just like everything else, just I understand that, money's gonna be expelled, and then we won't have to wait till it comes back. And that's fine with me, but we gotta run it through budget finance, you know, some kind of numbers. And, and I don't hope we can get that done by next Monday night.
Charles, I'm sort of, Charles, could you, uh, speak to Richard Terry in finance and tell him, you know, we're looking at passing this next Monday night, but we need some numbers.
How many county employees are there that work for the health department, Charles? I mean, that'd tell me a whole lot about it.
I'm just, we've got, probably about 50% are county employees, honestly, and they're probably looking at 10 to 12.
So, you take 12, let's say 12 times 25, is that right? If they go to full, that'd be the full amount? So you'd have a number there, but you're gonna have to have something to pull down, you know, it's, because it's, it's a given, it's gonna come back into this.
Yeah.
Pardon?
300,000.
300,000 dollars, so it's a significant amount of money, but we're gonna get it back. But I know without shadow of doubt, if you throw this on the finance without going through it, it's gonna be a mess. And, and I'm not saying it can't be done in a week, but it's gonna have to be some kind of line item to set up to do this, and I don't know how that'll be done.
Well, I'd jump for joy if all of them took this opportunity.
They, they won't, but you've got to have some kind of either a, a sign-up sheet that says, hey, I'm dedicating myself, I'll sign this, get it to us, if it's two people, great, if it's 12, it'd be great. But I just, myself, I know how it works, and, but I do, and I apologize. This is the first time I say this. I know you said it probably last month, this is the first time I've read this, and I apologize. Do you see any chance, Johnny, by getting through the next funding?
Charles, I would ask that you reach out to Richard, and then, uh, once you've done that, then I will reach out to Richard and, and try to have a pleasant resolution.
I'll put it on my portion if we can get that accomplished, if that's fine, I'll carry it. But we gotta make sure we got a fund, and, and I mean, I'm sure all the commissioners are fine with it, but we'll know for certain the next Monday night. I think do all this work, and then, and I'll have it up votes for it.
I got you. Scott, just a second. I'm, I'm with you guys talking stuff, you know, but, uh, Ralph, and then, then you, okay? And then Ms. Sue. Ralph, go ahead.
Hey, can you do a poll and ask all your employees this first year, how many is willing and think that they'd want to do it? Don't just put us down to 12, you say, I've got four, that says they would love to do this? And that would give us a number to go on, the ones that would say, all right, I'm wanting to do it, I'd like to do it now. And put their name in the hat, and we do it for four instead of 12.
I could certainly ask that.
I mean, you, you could ask them and say, how many of you would be interested in this? So we can, we, that'd give us a better number. And then the next year, it goes on, then the others could say, well, it worked out good, so you, I'll, I'll try.
Ralph, what I, what I'll do is, once Charles has reached out to Richard, I'll have, you know, I'll talk with Richard, and then I'll have Richard email every one of you to let you know, you know, where we stand. Is that good? Anything else, Ralph?
No, that's it.
Scotty, you have the floor.
We just need some numbers, I'm all for it, but, uh, we gotta find the funding for it and make sure, because, uh, it's, I think it's a good opportunity for these people, like Ralph said, you know, give us some numbers during before this board, so we can have an idea about where we're at.
Ms. Sue, you have the floor.
I've got two questions, and you may or may not know this, but what about the ambulance service? Now, are they also would be eligible for this?
This would be strictly employees working at the health department.
Okay, and you said you do not know how many are county employees?
I do, I don't have the exact number with me, I didn't bring, and, and trying to pull, working in two counties, it just runs all together, but I'm guesstimating eight to 12, our county employees.
My next question, do any of these people, would they be eligible for the Tennessee Reconnect program through the Tennessee law?
That I can't answer, I don't know what their requirements are. I would assume, based on whatever their criteria is, that they potentially be eligible, but I can't answer that question.
Yeah, cause that's, that's the way they should go if they are.
That's the Tennessee Reconnect?
Yeah, Tennessee law, law.
I also want to answer that question.
Well, I don't think... What did you say again?
It's, uh, 24 years old with no two-year certification or anything.
Yeah.
So they, so they can't have an associate's degree, they'd have to be basically middle of college or just starting. Again, I don't, I don't know the answer, but I'm just thinking that is...
Anything else, Ms. Sue?
No, that's all.
Okay, Charles, thank you, if you don't mind, please reach out to Richard Terry first thing in the morning, and then I'll, then I'll get in touch with him.
Okay, sounds good, and, and if I can take liberty for just a second.
Go ahead, sir.
I just want to keep it before the commission about the, um, billment improvement, whenever the COVID funding comes in, and I just want to kind of keep that, keep that on, if you will, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your time.
Appreciate you.
Thanks for bringing it.
Thank you. Okay, now Rusty, you said if everything goes good, you'll care, correct?
Everything goes good, I'll care.
I'll need you, I feel I want to be in the budget forms. Here, here, you can have, you can have mine. Okay.
You know what I'm likely to say?
I know.
I bet.
Okay, the next one is the resolution number 22-18-4. The resolution requesting for the Campbell County Commission to adopt the bicycle and pedestrian plan. And Scotty, you're carrying that, correct?
Yes, sir, I've got that online, sir.
Okay, Mayor, is there any, uh, is there anything you want to tell us about that before we move on?
It's one that was presented to the planning commission and the county commission, I thought we approved it. The state said they need a resolution.
Okay, all right, thank you, and you've got it.
And there's no financial commitment associated with adopting the plan. It just lays out projects that we could do that still need to be priced in design.
Thank you.
End of the term.
Okay.
Tell me the reason.
You have a question?
That is, but for the, for the planning commission, this is what I'm thinking.
Okay. That was, uh, number 22-18-4.
Yeah, I understand. It's fair of my resolution.
No, no, and like I said, Scotty's carrying that.
It's 22-18-4 is what you said it was, yeah.
I'll wait for next question.
Okay, uh, Mayor, you have the floor.
The, the only other issue was, would be the vacancy on the Board of Equalization, or Keith Clark Feltler stepped down.
Okay, and...
Lenses cities available to serve, I recommend.
Okay.
We will need to get him through training, whoever we point through training next month.
Do you need a motion from one of the fourth district commissioners? Uh, go, you, Ms. Sue, want to carry that one?
I'll be here for that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sue. Anything else, Mayor?
No, it's all there.
Okay. All right, guys, let's talk about the county commission here, and we are in reverse order, Mr. Ory. Hey, Scott, do you have anything?
Yeah, excuse me.
Sorry, buddy. Anything? Okay, Rusty, what do you have?
Uh, that educational support for the health, uh, health county, the health department county employees. And the second thing is, uh, we have a personnel policy revision, I think Amanda sent that out to everybody last, last week sometime. And, uh, it's actually concerning revised policy addressing the finalized longevity scale. We had to change that longevity scale about three years ago. It's finally come down to the basic, that it has to be approved. I want you to, just, it's not a whole lot to read and look at, uh, so we can approve that Monday night.
Okay.
I could see if taking, we, we've been wearing us out with meetings. And, uh, and I'm just gonna give everybody a break, and everybody kind of can understand that, just read through that next week, but it's about revisions to the personnel policy, and the biggest part of it is that, uh, longevity policy, I'm sorry. And there's actually some, some language in there about what states a full-time and a part-time employee is, so there'll be some little bit of verbage changes on that too. Um, I think that's all, has anybody got any questions? I try to answer them or not if I can.
You go a little bit, if you don't mind, go a little bit, just a little bit in depth, Rusty, what's your, what's your, what's your thinking there?
Let me get this over with, Scotty.
All right, I appreciate it, cause I have very concerns that, I'm very risky.
Yes. Paragraph two of the personnel policy, and it talks, talks about the definition, and it talks about the number of hours a part-time employee can work annual fiscal year, July 1st, July 30th, which is 1508. 29 hours per week times 52 weeks is where you come up with 1508. There's gotta be some kind of basis for part-time and full-time, and that's basically it. But the maximum number of weeks a temporary employee, there, it talks about temporary employees, uh, is 24 weeks. If they go to that, they become a part-time employee, really, they're not a temporary. So, it's just the basics of that, Scotty, but a few years ago, we increased the longevity pay, which is a benefit to our county employees. Honestly, honestly, I wish the county commission got longevity pay, uh, but we don't. And it's, it's based on 200, help me out, Zach, I'm trying to find it.
We increased it from 113 to 210, I think.
210, and that's, and that's a big plus, uh, for the employees, that's, that's like a favorite.
I'm happy to hear that.
But it's been pushed because of the way this structure's set up to the state. So, we've done approve this, I found it. Uh, effective July the 1st, 22, a full-time employee, per a part-time employee, county officials, not governed by the state mandated minimum salary amount, shall receive a minimum of $210 increase in compensation per year of service, up to the maximum of 20 years. So it's almost doubled, which is a good thing, it comes to them on the check, it don't come at one lump sum, it comes on the check. So, uh, we, we did this three years ago, it was highest three years ago, but now the verbage's come in, and action's gonna take place. Am I correct, Zach, if you're rolling the eyes?
Well, you're correct, and if I can just comment real quick, I think with, I think with the raises we've put in place as a commission, and I think with the longevity pay change, I think like employees who have been here over 20 years, I think over the last four years, come July 1st, they will be making at least three more dollars on the hour than they were in 2018. And I think that's a major accomplishment for this commission.
Scotty, that answer your questions, right?
Yeah, I, I'm glad to hear that, that, they, they really, the people that has been working for a long time like that... Yeah, I'm glad to hear that, that they, they really, the people that has been working for a long time like that deserve that, Mr. Chairman, they really do. And I really commend that.
It gives incentive for employees that you hires, that that's, that you stayed with us and you stayed with us, you get your longevity, you know.
Well, it's, Mr. Chairman, I may, Mr. Orrick, for somebody this day in time to put, stay in a position either all those years that will come in, you know, that would stay with, with that, that long of years, it has to be recognized and you, you've got to take care of the people that stay with you.
Great. You have the answer, Rusty?
One more thing, it's got also verbiage in there about the legal holidays, it's filed with TCA, TCA code 15-1-100. And you just need to read all this. Everything Jeff has got pretty laid out through this email that he sent Amanda, it's all highlighted. But if you got any questions, give me a call, give Jeff a call and we'll try to figure out, give you an answer back. This is benefiting all the county employees. And is it also a legal official, Zach, is a legal official involved in that longevity or not, or?
No.
I think I'm done, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Orrick.
Can I make a call?
Go ahead, yes, go.
I've got the floor. Some of your commissioners may recall last year, we met with Attorney General of State Tennessee, I think the mayor was there also. And he wanted all the control of the whole board. You remember that? He's wanting to be the one handling, well, the Tennessee County Service Association, the Tennessee County Commission Association just couldn't see that happen. So they pushed and got the governor to do an whole board, whole board abatement committee. And at that point in time, I jumped for an individual here in Campbell County because everybody can agree what's going on is right here in our area. It's that same, but we need, we need a voice. And I brought it back to the commission and the commission adopted a resolution asking for Shane Sexton, Judge Sexton to be our, be the representative for this area, which is a big area. And he already covers five counties. Well, actually, we talked about this in November when we was in Memphis. And they hadn't made their minds up yet. They were still picking, you know how things work, sometimes it's not the person who gets the job that needs it. So the people, but I got an email last week from David Connor and they actually picked Shane Sexton, the judge, to be the one for the whole board committee. So this commission not only helped our county, they helped ever surrounding county around us, plus East Tennessee. And Shane was kind of worried about accepting it because he's not seeking office. But David Connor talked to him and I talked to him, you don't have to be the judge. And actually, he's got, his hands are untied now since he's not running. And he can do a lot more for us, so we're blessed. So when you just get a chance, you just run into David Connor, you run into Charlie Curtis, this, this group sat down with the governor and they picked these people out. And he told me it was probably one of the best items that anybody had submitted. And I'm thankful that we ended up that way.
We got a comment.
That board will have control 65% of the money.
Rusty said, hey, I, I was tickled to death when Shane was selected and also when he said that he would, he would serve.
Yes. Scott County and Harrison County and all of them, I'll just tell them they can thank me later, but honestly, that's one of the best picks that we could pick out. And it wasn't just somebody we thought was, it's somebody that's worked in the trenches and done this for years.
Bless his head. Ralph?
Could Mr. Orrick type up another resolution and let's send it to him and thank him? Thank the governor and thank them for choosing him and that we, and send Shane a letter that we appreciate that he took the job.
You want to do a, do something, I'll try to get something together, go and put it over the board.
Well, you, I've got, I've got six things, I've got too much. Can you do it, Rusty?
I, I don't care if it's on you. It's one of, I don't care, but we just want to wait until next month.
Well, it'll be fine.
We're going to be in the Tennessee County Commission Association meeting in Gatlinburg in May the 20th.
24, 26.
And I'll get it ready and prepared and I'll get all the good names that we need to send it out to, that's fine.
Be good. Thank you, thank you.
But you see Shane, thank you for taking it because he was worrying to me that he was not accepted, I don't know, I got the phone call from David Connor that they was going to ask him if he won't. And it worried me that since he wasn't running for office, that he might not want to do anything. But he feels like he still got some luck that he can put to the effort to help us.
I think, I think so too.
It will benefit, it will be. I know he's going to be fired.
Yeah.
But he's going, we're going to have somebody at least looking for our benefit in Campbell County, Clayburn County, Scott County, Harrison County and the whole East Tennessee area. Where most of this, and I hate to say it, this is for most of this problem, Zach.
That is true. Anything else, Rusty?
No, I just wanted everybody to understand.
Ms. Sue, you have the floor.
Oh, I do?
Yes, ma'am.
Did I ask? Oh, I need. Okay, I have. Very emotional. Hold on, there we go. To surplus the mayor's vehicle and designated to be, to go to Ridgewood Fire, Volunteer Fire Department to be used as first responder vehicle. I need that on the agenda.
Okay. Mayor?
Can I ask you to table that one month so I can get?
Well, hey, no.
I want to take a seat to get your vehicle.
We're not going to put you walking. Oh, Mayor? I'm rebuilding a scooter over there. You might want to come on the line.
One, one other thing on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you get the VIN number to Amanda on that plane?
Anything else, Ms. Sue?
Yes, and then I have on here to the appointment of Glenn Smith, that would be my second thing on the agenda.
What you looking at me like that for?
No, I'm looking at this movie.
I'm looking, I'm looking.
You've been upstaged, buddy. You've been upstaged tonight, I'm telling you.
Three of them may be able to be combined.
Mr. Morrow, you have the floor.
Okay, real quick. I'll try to make it quick. Before I go into stuff on the list, there's two things I need to make you all aware of. Number one, Board of Equalization appointments, I believe, my understanding of state law is, is we are required to appoint all five members of that because it's April of an even number of year. And I think that's supposed to be done in the month of April. So again, I know the fourth districts, there's going to be a change. I don't anticipate there being any changes, but I believe percent to state law, we need to go in and just re-improve essentially.
Real quick, all fives or new people?
Yes, or anyone's.
Real quick, can you get us the list of the members? And maybe if we could find out if they're still willing to serve. I don't think they've changed after years.
I think the mayor can get that for us.
Angel Rubinson, Martha Wells.
Third one from each district, Marlene Broadway still on?
Marlene Broadway, both. And, and the fourth one was in and Jerry Neil has been serving from the fifth district.
Do we, I guess they elect a long chair for them.
Hi, Zach.
Okay, and then also on the state's website, they're open for public comment, but the emergency broadband grant, there were four grants filed. So if you wanted to make public comment on all those, that is open. And we have submitted, there was four applicants, I believe we submitted support letters for three of them that requested it. And again, this is not guaranteed, you're going to get it. And in fact, most of them may be denied, but it's certainly something to look at. And this could have a major impact on Campbell County and I certainly hope that some, if not all, are approved. But again, that public comment period is open through the 22nd and I encourage you all to take a look at that and make any public comments that you may have.
Thank you.
Also, moving on now to my list, the first three items may be able to be accomplished with one motion because that's how we did it in the infrastructure committee. And that's approval of project win. And also the updated, you all should have a copy of it here, I can't find mine. Of the updated data form, which puts the disclaimer that I believe you all requested as well as the question regarding the tax fees for the day we're going to collect. And with that, and then also, this was not approved by the committee, but to get information out to the public on this, I would like, if it's okay, if we could issue a press release once the new email address and all that is set up to handle that, if that's okay, I'd like.
To make a motion for that?
Yes. And then also, y'all probably seen an email from Jeff on Thursday. And I have a motion to authorize approval of the issuance of a purchase order to LUB in the amount of $3 million for the county's 50% share of the total estimated waterline projects in Cedar Creek communities. This is going to be paid for with ARP funds with, and we've already approved that interlocal agreement. And it does say Cedar Creek communities, when you look up the interlocal agreement, that's what the project is titled. That still includes like Norman Road and Pine Crest community as well as like areas like Barclane and Flat Hole as well.
You'll be making those motions, would you submit those to Amanda?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
I believe that's got it.
Okay, very good. Lisa?
I'm good, thank you.
Butch? Scotty?
I got about seven things here.
I know.
No, I'll, I'll be generous. Mayor, the question. You got me on three minutes. Gosh, the question I asked you about compassionately about the money, if, say for an example, if you gave me $10,000 versus to $250,000, I would ask you only to bring back Monday night something that hopefully will get resolved and maybe try to work together here to keep those people. Because $250,000, we basically got, got that revenue, we got to have them, I'm just saying this. So if you take $10,000 and divide it, that's, you know, $240,000, I'd much rather have a $250,000.
I argued this a few years ago.
I'm, I'm saying if you can help us out on that, I'd be gracious to you because really, if you think about it, you taxed, working with tax base and $250,000, then I'd much rather have $250,000 to raise taxes on my people in my district and my county.
I'm happy to carry that.
Okay, then we'll hear back from Monday night on that, on this portion.
Just, that's the information purposes only?
Yeah, 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 yeah. So anyway, when do you, real quick, I've got some stuff here, real quick.
You're, you're fine.
Okay, thank you.
I want to make a comment. Mayor, all we need, if you don't care, if you can get that information out to Amanda, she get it out to us, you know, we can have it for Monday night.
And I'm really gracious to that, really, because that's $240,000, Mr. Chairman, a lot of money.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Real quick, Mr. Chairman, I would probably ask you and Rusty and some of you guys that's been here a long time. I would like to try to do something compassionately for Whit, we talked about this, you and I did. I would thank that, that Mr. Whit going, been on the board for 40 something years, Mr. Marlowe and, and you guys, if you, Robert, if you guys will come up with something, maybe I will let you all handle that and I'll definitely support it. And I think it's time to be, him be recognized, maybe with a plaque. If you guys could help me and I'd be gracious about that.
Scotty, I had talked to Amanda about that and we thought about doing it next month and everything because we were hoping that Whit would be well enough that we could get him here. I hope he ain't watching this on TV. But in saying that, yeah, we're going, we'll put together, we'll all have him put in it to do some type.
Whatever you got put together, 110% support it. I think the people in the first district and then all of us together will support it. But I, I'm speaking for myself, I think it's time to, to, you know, he's, he's about his time, I think it's time to help with that.
I think Rusty had a comment too, Scotty.
And I hope he's not listening either. But the Tennessee County Commission Association meets tomorrow, Thursday, Monday. And I'm actually going to try to get something prepared, we can give Whit there. If not, we'll bring it back to you. How's that? That'll be good. Come for the association. That'll be good.
I really want to tell you guys, Whit going's, has been a big inspiration to me ever since 2002. And I, I want to commend the job that he's done with his water in his, his district and the first district and he has got to be commended for that. And I appreciate that.
Well, you said we put something together for him next month from the county commission and then Rusty will have something, you know, maybe for June?
Yeah, and if he shows up at, if he can attend.
Do it, do it at the.
At the.
Meeting in Gatlinburg?
Meeting in Gatlinburg and it'll be the whole association will be part of it.
Okay. Scotty?
Okay, guys, okay, and I, I appreciate you guys giving me this opportunity, all these things here. These things were important to me, but it's more important to the people in the districts and the precincts of the Campbell County that these questions I'm, I'm asking here. Mr. Mayor Morton, just real quick, can you give us, I didn't get a, I haven't been getting any report, just a, a, a brief comment on the way our, our roads, I know they were here recently, I know that, but can you give us any kind of date on, on the roads on 63 and F4, real quick? Because I don't want this to fall away, so we just got to keep the public informed.
I've sent the T doc updates every week, you've got them, so.
And we get an email.
The timeline is.
We still in that time, 2023, is that about right? Okay, that's what I need.
2025.
2025, well, one was 2023, then one was 2025, right, guys? Okay, all right, good deal, we'll leave that as is for now, but I'll, I'll keep a monitor of that. Robert Higginbogum.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll wait until the guys get done there.
Okay, chairman.
Okay, so Commissioner Higginbogum, Commissioner Marlowe in the first district. Guard rails is an issue on some of those areas in the first district. Of course, you know, me being in the second, that's part of my district as well. Mr. Commissioner Higginbogum, your, your update on the two guard rails, this is serious, it ain't just the painting that you, that you went and spray painted. That don't give me nothing, that don't concrete the, the deal here. When are we going to be able to get those two guard rails pulled up? It's been almost a year now.
Mr. Dill, they asked me to spray some lines in two different locations that was requested by the public, went out there and sprayed it. So it's up to him whenever he gets his men out there to install it.
Yeah. Scotty, that's, that's not an issue with the county commission.
Oh, well, that's.
That's an issue with the, with the road superintendent. You know, we can't tell him when to put guard rails and stuff up, but that's.
No, I mean, we could just keep, he could, I'm just saying, he could keep us informed of how it's going and stuff like that.
It would still be something, you'd have to give any information. Hold just a second, Scotty. Mr. Coke, you had a comment?
I just wanted to say very briefly before you be thinking about on this fishing tournament. Recall here that this commission cannot make a direct contribution to a for-profit company. You can make money available that goes through the industrial development board or through the Chamber of Commerce if you so choose to do that. But you can't make a direct payment to them. So when you're talking here about what your options are, keep in mind that would not be one of them. You know, you'd have to work cooperatively with, with some other agency because they're not a nonprofit.
Okay. Scotty, go ahead.
Okay. Well, anyway, Mr. Chairman, it's only fair.
Yes, yes. I understand.
It's only fair to say for Commissioner Higginbogum to come back and give us a report on the guard rails. I mean, I think that's fair, that's in his district, me and Mr. Marlowe's district.
Well, go ahead.
Do you agree on that, maybe?
No, I think it's the road superintendent's responsibility and I think that as county commissioner, we have the authority to tell them.
Well, just give the public.
I got you.
Okay, Rusty, real quick, you give us a little update on how the, you or Mr. Marlowe, give us a little update on the water situation in the district that needed. You got any, give us a little.
It's in the planning phase, it's in engineering, design, and I think that was sent out.
Just a second, no, just a second. Rusty's talking now, let you.
He can go ahead, it was all sent out through Jeff from Kenny Bear and I know the, the plan is, go ahead and read it to him if you can.
Okay, let me get.
I think everybody's seen.
Thank you, Rusty, Zach, you have the floor.
Okay, let me get to it here. Okay, on Thursday, I'll just read the whole email. And Jeff says, I am pleased to report that yesterday afternoon, LUB general manager Kenny Bear provided me with a copy of the state revolving fund loan approval letter received by city of LeFollet on March 29th, 2022, first attachment for planning and engineering phase of the waterline projects in the Cedar Creek communities. The state revolving fund loan proceeds will provide funding for LUB's portion of these costs, with the county's portion of these costs to be provided from ARP funds. As I understand, the planning and engineering portion of the project will take approximately six minutes to complete and thereafter, construction phase of the project should begin by no later than early spring 2023 and possibly as early as the winter 2022. In accordance with the second paragraph of the project funding section on page four of the approved interlocal agreement between Campbell County and LUB second attachment, please have the county commission take action to approve authorizing the issuance of a purchase order to LUB in the amount of $3 million for the county's 50% share of the total estimated waterline project cost in Cedar Creek communities at their upcoming meeting on April 18th, 2022. That was what I put on the agenda.
Okay.
Once this item is approved by the county commission and the. Once this item is approved by the county commission and the associated purchase order is issued to LUB to encumber the funds for the waterline project, the county will have encumbered $3,855,000, at the county's $3,869,420 and 50 cents first round allotment of ARP funds. The remaining encumbered $14,420 of the county's first round allotment of ARP funds will be retained to be coupled with the county's second round allotment of ARP funds that are anticipated to be received in the summer of 2022, at which time the infrastructure committee can begin to make recommendations to the county commission as to the proposed use, uses of second round allotment of ARP funds. Keep in mind that we did allocate that if needed for the vehicle. Also, um, he says that in determining the use of the county's ARP funds for the foregoing enumerated projects, especially the funds used for waterline projects, the county commission ensured that the uses of ARP funds aligned with Comptroller's Office recommendation that ARP funds be used for transformational capital projects that otherwise would not be accomplishable. The county commission should be proud of their efforts to serve as good stewards on, of the ARP funds by approving projects that adhere to the recommendations of the Comptroller's Office and in so doing, provide lasting benefits to the citizens of Campbell County.
That your question?
They look pretty quick there.
They do.
Uh, what is?
Robert, Robertson, he had a question for you, Scotty.
Well, I went at stake. I know Mr. Marlowe, number five, will come up for approval. When us, LUB, since it's already here, the problems being looked at.
Okay. Okay, Scotty?
You talking about the water?
Yes.
Okay, when, what I was gonna say, when all this, how long, when, when's it gonna be, be able to start processing the, the jobs and stuff?
It's in the engineering phase.
Okay, all right.
But now.
Go ahead.
One of the biggest things is waterline, you know, very.
Yeah.
Especially with the line itself, that's one of the big.
The six or, you're working on four or six, Rusty?
No, he's talking about purchasing the line.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, okay, got you.
Go ahead, Scotty.
Uh, okay, now, Rust, I want to knock this out real quick. When I say the guardrails, I'm talking about, I, I, I'll, if you want me to, guys, or you guys can, just get, just get an update. That's all I want. I mean, you know, that's just what the people want. But now, when I'm talking about the guardrails real quick, which is still in my district in the first, when you go out toward Cedar Creek, Coach, you go out, before you get to the bridge, around that horseshoe bend curve, everybody knows where that's at, you come to straightaway, you come to my folks' old home place, and then you come that straightaway, and I'm telling you, boys, this is very important, is when you come on that straightaway, where that little park is down there, Coach, that little straightaway, if you go a little bit, it's, it's very deep down there.
Yep.
All I'm asking, Robert, maybe you guys in the first district can talk, I'll leave that to you guys. And, and I talked to Ron today, and he says, Scotty, I don't know really if we can do anything about that, but maybe if you guys can talk to, to, uh, road superintendent, uh, Robert, and see if you guys can help us on that. Because I've had several people, uh, coaches that talked to me about that. Hit is very deep. Can, if need a guardrail anywhere in the first district besides Victory, that's one of the places. Because if somebody goes in there and by, by chance drives real fast, they'll go down, they'll keep going, they'll go in the lake.
I agree.
You know where that's at?
Yes. Anything else, Scotty?
Yeah. Uh, real quick, boys, and I'll leave two things real quick, and I'll leave you guys alone. Can anybody give me a, an update on the broadband? Zach, maybe you and Rusty know a little bit about that real quick, and I appreciate that.
Okay, I'll, I'm trying to answer, and I went over it. Just, um, you have four maps right here. Um, these are the grants that have been applied for, and the state is currently taking public comment on it. We don't know if we're gonna get one or not, but they are taking public comments.
All the red represents what we can do, be able to do.
It represents what, if, it represents, like, this one is Highland. If Highland gets the grant, this is what they're gonna do with it. And the other one here, Comcast. If Comcast gets the grant, that's what they're gonna do with it. They might get it, they might not. We, we just simply don't know the answer to that because that's how grants work. You don't know until you know that an entity's received it. But they do have a public comment period open. I will say that this body, um, has, um, in September of 2020, we took action to approve a resolution that, um, encouraged providers to expand broadband. Uh, we have consistently tried to meet, um, with providers. And, uh, recently, this past month, I worked about forty hours on getting all the policies written needed to become a broadband-ready community, which, uh, should increase the grant scores for all of these entities by ten points.
You'll keep the commission updated as much as you can?
As much as I can, but this is public information on the state's website.
Rusty, you have anything to say about it?
No, I just, uh, we just hope whoever gets it, and we hope we get the point of it. And I honestly, what I'm hearing is three, I'm talking about nine. There's a big chance that we might end up with one of these plans, and I'm not gonna say we. It'll be beneficial to us.
Scotty, you have another question?
Yeah, okay. All right, guys, so let's talk about this real quick, and I want to see how everybody stands on this issue here. Mr. Chairman, uh, I know, uh, I've had several people that, that's working for the county was talking about the hazard pay. And I'm wondering how, uh, you guys feel about it. And I think, uh, we could probably get some monies out of the ARP funds with this, I think. Is that right, Mr.? Can you, can the mayor elaborate on it a little bit about it, Mr. Coach?
Well, Scotty, it's my understanding is I think this body had agreed that that money's not gonna come in until July, the second phase. Is that not correct?
That's what was discussed.
That's what's. And that, uh.
The new commission, the new elected officials will be dealing with it.
Yeah, that the monies would not be used as a political tool, and therefore it'd be, uh, you know, after the, after the election, that those people would be the ones to divvy out the funds, if any.
Yeah, I don't.
Now, am I correct in saying that, guys?
Well, the money's not gonna be here, and I think I've heard you say the past, if you don't have the money, you can't spend it.
That is correct.
So, you know, to me, we can make plans for anything. But now, with this here, from what I've been told, that every department head's gonna have to tally everything up. They're gonna have to end up showing certified numbers. And then I would hope that department heads would actually sign off, that if they agree to it, that if they screw it up, it'll come out of their butt, because it's a big payback.
Yeah, just a second, Mayor. Scotty, you and I have talked about.
Go ahead.
Yeah. And we said, when the comptroller, they said right there in front of us, and I've told y'all, and I'll emphasize this again, I will not vote to spend one penny until it is in our hands. It is in, as they say, in the cobra. At that point, then we can start looking at, you know, at the areas that have been brought forward, okay? Mayor, you had a, you had a point, then Zach?
It's, uh, I mean, we've already certified the hours in the payroll. Certifying it again is simply second time. I'm sure the department head will do it.
Okay, very good. Zach?
There's a law specifying the county mayor has the latitude to make that motion.
Actually not make the motion, but actually set it, play this, get it, right? They're setting and play who, who gets the script of the money. Not, not make a motion. You said make a motion.
To, to specify, well, actually, to recommend.
Who gets it?
If it's you.
But it's, if I may, and what, and I've got to discuss this because I've actually thought about it. The money's not there, but it's, it's a big undertaking. I mean, just certifying the hours, they're gonna have to go back. Let's use the commission. Zach worked in my department, and Zach took off on Tuesday, uh, 2021, in April. He don't get that day. You have to go each day. You just can't hand out the amount. That's what happened in Gordon County. Gordon County had to pay back because they didn't go through the process of getting every drop and piddle like the federal government said had to be. And I talked to the finance about it. They said there was no way. They had the manpower at the time trying to keep the county running what they're doing now to go through, so each department would have to certify their own pay scheme. That's me.
Just a second. Uh, Zach, then Ralph.
Just kind of to reiterate what Rusty said, um, it's very complicated because it has to be based on actual hours worked. You cannot include, and if you had employees working from home, the days they worked from home, they do not qualify for it. Same thing, days that they took vacation, days they were out on COVID leave, sick leave, holidays. Also, with hazard pay as well, you, I don't know how you go back and how you calculate it for exempt employees because exempt employees are not required to turn time sheets in. The one thing I will say, based on the timeline that you're going to see hazard pay, or see the round two funds come in, coupled with the fact that we know that kind of July one, employees are getting a $0.75 raise plus longevity increases. I may be wrong, but if I'm not mistaken, I believe that generally takes about two to three pay periods for finance to process that anyways. So the timeline you're on is already gonna put you past September. So that in and of itself means it's going to be an issue not for this commission to approve, but for the next commission.
Okay, Ralph, just a second, Ralph. Go ahead, Ralph.
Is this just for county employees, or wouldn't the people working at the hospitals and clinics, and would this not qualify everybody in the whole county? Not just county employees? I mean, it, it wasn't just being. Okay, well, that's what I'm saying, though. You're just picking out the county employees. Everybody in the county is a taxpayer and voter, and they, they deserve, if you're gonna do it, we need to do it for the whole county, not just the county employees. I think everybody, if you're gonna be fair, be fair. But that's my point, is we just point, can't, can't point to county employees. You got school teachers, they were. But kids that are McDonald's, they were. They're all, they, they, they wasn't open to serve you dinner. You know, but they, they put their life on the line just like they're best, so we're talking millions of dollars here, not just, you know, it's something that needs to be looked at over the whole table, not just for one.
But please, please heed my advice. If you do not have the money in hand, we can't be spending it.
Right.
And again, at this timeframe, the timeframe we're on, this is not gonna be a decision for us to make. This is a decision for the next commission.
Okay. Mayor, you had, you had, you had.
The reason I nominate county employees is because we do have a payroll. I don't have a payroll for people who don't work hospitals. That would take additional labor to determine that, but they are qualified if you so choose. This, this is probably on the order of $600,000 or $700,000 for a county employee.
But we don't get to choose who gets it.
I recommend.
Yeah, the mayor has, the mayor has the obligation of picking who gets it. The commission has to support it or not support it. Am I correct?
That's correct.
I mean, not nothing issues, but I mean, it's.
But it's unsettling what the accounting requirement would be.
Accounting, the county's gonna be a monster here, but they are qualified.
I mean, it's only for me.
If you want to spend some of the money, administer that, then that's fine.
Okay, guys, we want to, Scotty, I think, I think you asked for a little debate. I think you got one. Well, anything else?
Well, yeah, I got two.
Go ahead.
Careful, it'll make the budget amendment to pay their employees tonight.
They gotta have the first ARP fund, and ours is the speed. It's not the second.
Well, my idea was to get in line for the second batch, make sure it makes the agenda change.
Guys, we're gonna run out of time here, uh, so, uh, I will entertain a motion to extend for thirty more minutes.
Motion to extend fifteen.
Motion to extend fifteen, seconded by Higginbogum. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. You got fifteen minutes, Mr. Or. Okay, Scotty, you have a call.
Okay, let me get this, I got to, okay, what?
Go ahead. No, go ahead. I'm listening to you. Go ahead.
So when you're talking about the hazard pay, we're actually talking about the hazard pay for essential workers. We're talking about the road department. We're talking about, uh, uh, the school department. We're talking about the custodians, the cook. What do you, what do you, what do you mean?
Schools are in charge of their employees.
Okay, so anyway, we're talking about the church department and the road department and, uh, and everybody here in the courthouse and stuff like that that took, took on, uh, the responsibility of working while the COVID, I think, they solely deserve it. And this is an issue where it's a great debate, but I don't want to see, like you said, giving any monies out right now until after election because that's not what it's all about. I'm not interested in that. I couldn't care less. I could take my own money. My own money, $4,400 a year, be happy as can be to give that money to them. I don't care. Don't bother me. It's not an issue about me. It's about helping the people.
Okay, go ahead.
And really, uh, I had one more item, and I forgot what it was. You guys were lucky I didn't have to rub them. I forgot what it was. But anyway, I appreciate y'all's time, but, uh, more than anything, I'm hoping Monday night, uh, Mayor, that you'll, you'll have the, uh, the, uh, because when I say $250,000 and $10,000, I'm really serious. I'd like to, I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, to see something and get, get, we need to, oh, yeah, I do have one more issue. Do you have an update on how the animal shelter director issue that you're supposed to be working on? Do you have anything to be able to share with us tonight?
I was gonna leave here and go discuss it with careful counsel, but Chairman asked me to go one more.
Okay, so you, you don't have any information at that right now? But what a reason I'm saying that, Mayor, is because, like, I think I just heard this tonight, is, uh, we're, we're really probably, you gotta think today's April 11th, next month's May, there's June, right before you know it. So I think it's an issue that we're gonna have to stay on top of. We're gonna have to do something because it's gonna be here before you know it. Do you agree, Mr. Chairman?
I agree.
And, uh, but I'd like for you to kind of keep us up for them, you know, anything that you, uh, come up with because, uh, you know, it's, it's an issue that's still a hot topic right now. We need to just stay on top of it because of the people who need to know, Scotty, is they really gonna close our animal shelter down? I don't think so. As long as I'm on board, I didn't, we're funding $150,000, we need to find out something.
Okay, anything else?
Be it, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, the only thing that Mr. Kitch has asked for is an update. If you could give that to, give that to Amanda and let Amanda send it out to us. Therefore, every commissioner here will have it in an email, and you won't even have to worry about, you know, making an issue.
But I want to iterate, I can meet with the mayors. Their councils have to appropriate.
That is correct. That is correct. I, but I, you know, I think, um, it's my understanding at the meeting the other night, that Chairman Baird asked that you meet with the mayors individually instead. On a one-on-one basis, not with their, you know, not with their body, not with the full commission, I would say. Okay, Tyler, you have anything? Robert, you have the floor?
I was actually out at Pine Crest today, directed this to for Scotty. Motor partners actually, Black Top and installing guardrails. Want to give an update on that. Also, I'm definitely bringing two, um, resolutions for approval to this body. The first one being request additional principal revenue, which will be from the state of Tennessee.
Okay.
The second one's gonna be a resolution requesting designation of change for the purpose of role for EMS reimbursement purposes.
Then you will have those in form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you, sir.
In which manner I can say thank him, thank you for doing that guardrail thing, really important. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mike, give me anything? Ralph, you have the floor?
Okay. Two of my items can be put together as one next week on buildings and grounds.
Okay.
Uh, we had a meeting on, last week, and we approved for the finance department to put a on-in on the back of their entrance of their building for safety. Uh, they got the money in the house, you know, it's over $500, but what they came for is, it's $3,400. They'll be paying for it out of their own budget. We just need to prove to give them permission to do that.
Okay.
Okay, that's one. Anybody any questions? All right. Number two, uh, it was brought to our attention last month at the animal shelter. Uh, they're triple bowl. It's 24-inch square. One of them is lauded out. And, uh, I talked to Tony. Tony talked to Patricia. Patricia found one. Uh, if the price hasn't changed, it's $2,722.66. We have this money in building's ground budget. Patricia, you still going to order that bowl?
It was my opinion, Tommy was judging.
Yeah, I think Tommy was gonna do it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not ordering it. Tommy wasn't.
Okay, so, but we need to buy it. State says it needs to be fixed.
That'll be your motion?
So we, we, we voted unanimously on both of these to pay and fix this.
Okay.
Okay, that's those two. Uh, I will be making a motion to honor the Jellicoe Middle School Boys and Girls Basketball Team for their outstanding season.
Now, is that the middle school or the high school?
Middle School and High School.
You're gonna do high school and middle school both?
Yes, that's what we're standing here. And then, um, let's see, the Jellicoe High School Blue Devils, uh, men's basketball team. And then. And then I'm gonna have to have Joe's help on this one. We need to approve the contract with the company in Jellicoe on the land contract. Joe, we got everything, but let Joe explain to you, we got one item they're gonna fix, and he, let him talk to you.
Okay. Mr. Koch?
The people from exponential, we're here on February 22nd, and we all approved the lease agreement with some changes. We made the changes, I got those back today, and they have signed the lease, there was just one, one place on it that they needed to initial, but they've made the changes that we requested that they make. I don't really think there's any additional action that's requested or that's needed by the commission.
Okay.
Because you approved the form of it with those revisions which have been made, so we have asked them to initial the change, or the box that they needed to initial in addition to signing it, send us two originals of the lease agreement, where it can then be executed by the county, we'll have one original, we'll send one back to them. The effective date of, of the lease agreement goes back to February 22nd, so that the RIM began on that date, and in my email that I sent them today, I asked them to send the check along with those two original executed documents to the finance department, and it would then be circulated for execution by the mayor and chairman, finance department, and I have decided this is the form. So it looks like they're finally taking it off.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. So I will not be making a motion on that.
Okay. Anything else?
No, no, that's, that's all I have. But we got financial statements for the animal shelter for the last four or five years for income, we need to all study that.
That came out, that came from finance, that's the information, you know, to look at.
So property and loss.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. On my part, we'll be recognizing the Jacksboro Middle School Boys and Girls Basketball Teams.
Don't try.
Bless his, all I can say is bless his heart, you know. But in saying, guys, it looks like we're going to be recognizing several basketball teams next month, which is great. We should be recognizing these kids for an outstanding job, and I just, I just, like my mom said, you can never go wrong by being good to a kid, you know? And I don't need to say, kid, they're, they're fine young men and women. Dewayne's out here, Dog, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, guys, that pretty much takes care of it. You have everything you need there?
I had one more thing.
All right, we're finished, Mr. Kidd, go ahead.
Well, you've got 15 minutes.
Uh-uh.
Can I just say one more thing?
Go ahead.
Hey, guys, Ralph, I think the Jellicoe, what's her name, Christina Brooklyn, had reached out to me, and she's wanting, and Rusty, I think they're wanting to talk to us again about the RAM, Mr. Chairman.
RAM clinic?